Good afternoon. It is 4:30 on May the 20th. As we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would like to again welcome all of those in attendance, a couple of you here, as well as those of you who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. We welcome your comments and opinions and ask that you participate, that your participation reflects the common desire we all share, to make Sheldon even greater place for all citizens. I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones. If you think you have it turned off already, please double check. You will have the opportunity to address the City Council under the public forum portion of the meeting, which will occur in just a few moments. When addressing the Council, please wait to be recognized by myself, and then step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please speak to the Council as a body, and not to any single member. Questions will be taken under advisement, and there will not be a back and forth at that time. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than four minutes, and after making your comments, please be seated. I ask that everyone please observe, but I know that you will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So at this time, I ask that you please join me for a moment of silence, followed by pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then if we could have a roll call, please.
Hey, Hamel?
Here.
John Brewster?
Here.
Brad Hent?
Here.
Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
I hear.
Okay, and then we have before the agenda, one, I guess I'm gonna call it a housekeeping item, we have the request from Connor McDonald listed as Item 3B under the public forum. We'll hear that request at that time, and then our discussion or action will move, will take place under new business. We'll make that the new 6A under new business, and then the other ones, just move down the, bump 'em down one. Understand?
Yep.
So with that change, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Hent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
All right, and at this time, we have reached the public forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here present that would like to make comment at this time? Please step forward, sir. State your name, and your address if you would.
Roger Grant, address is 2021 South Fifth Avenue, Sheldon, Iowa.
Hold on, just a second.
You are muted.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm kinda upset-
You are unmuted.
...with the Council trying to get a child out of the chicken business, and my feeling is, it's a good education for him, it's a school project, and I don't know why the Council or the city wants to deny a child of his FFA program, and I think the city should have more important things to do than worry about a few chickens in the city limits. And as far as I'm concerned, I wish there would be more children that would have responsibilities taking care of livestock in the city, because it's a good education practice for them, and it'll teach them responsibilities. And I think the city ought to leave the livestock business in the city limits alone. There isn't much in the city limits that would bother anybody, and I was to visit with them this morning, and they said there is none of the neighbors that have any complaints about the child having his livestock there. So, as far as I'm concerned, the City Council should forget any laws or regulations about livestock in the city limits. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments at this time? Are there any, is there anyone listening by way of the computer or your mobile device that would like to comment on anything other than, I know Connor, you're waiting in the wings, so just be patient, in case somebody else has something they'd like to contribute at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think there's anybody other than Frank dialed in that isn't in the panelists.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Okay, Connor, then we are at that portion of our meeting, where we're ready for you to state your, state your piece. You may go ahead and speak as you, as you so desire.
Don't we have a consent agenda to go through first?
Thank you.
We're still part of public forum, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought we were-
Yeah, it's a discussion, we're just gonna hear his comments, and then we'll deal with it in, in business, is the plan, okay? So Connor, the, the stage is yours.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to say that I would really appreciate it if the Council would allow me to continue to have my chickens and my ducks. I treat them like family, I take care of them very well, they're never left without food or water. I have several neighbors that have supported me all the way, that have no issue with me having any chickens or ducks in my backyard. And if I need to make any changes whatsoever that the Council does not like for the public to be seeing in my backyard, I would be happy to make any changes necessary.
Thank you for your comments at this time. I'd ask that you just, we've got some other items of business we need to attend to, but in terms of discussion, we're gonna move that down, and that, like I mentioned earlier, we're gonna be discussing that under new business. You probably don't have a copy of the agenda with you at this time, but that'll happen maybe 15, 20 minutes down the road, so just, if you could, I think it'd be good for you to stick on and just maybe learn something else of what else we're doing here. All right?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, moving on then, now, now we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Support.
All right, thank you. Any discussion, anything you'd like to do, discuss separately? If not, a roll call, please.
Eggers?
Can you hear us, Tom?
Tom, you're m- yeah, my apologies, aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Just a note on that, for the media, the student firefighter application is Brayden Hent, Brandon Hent, excuse me, oh Brayden, it is Brayden. Brayden Hent has been approved as a firefighter, student firefighter, and the appointment of Terry Hurlberth to the Parks and Rec Board has been approved by this motion. We thank Terry for his willingness to serve in that capacity. All right, then, moving on to the Item 5A, third reading of the ordinance amending water rates. Sam, looks like you have some comments for us on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Just simply like to state, we didn't receive much in the way of feedback over the last few weeks. We did have some concern registered from a car wash owner regarding the impact of the rates. I believe those questions have been answered. I had sent him the information, and the explanation, and the studies.
Is there any further discussion, or can we move this forward?
To make the motion to approve the third reading.
Support. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye. All right, moving on then to Item 5B, a resolution acquiring life insurance for volunteer and part-time emergency services personnel. Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Joel Gasing is on his way, and so he was gonna be here about quarter till, so if you wouldn't mind, if we could go on to C and D and come back to this one.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, moving on then to 5C, we'll come back to 5B. Consider next steps regarding the contracts for sale of 1023 Garfield Avenue and 1401 South Second Avenue. I'm assuming you have an update for us on that as well, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Feel, we feel pretty good about where we're at. Garfield is essentially complete, closing can, can happen any day now. There were several contingencies that we had accomplished that once, Kervin Sterler's attorney, Katie Morgan, has finished her review of that, closing can happen a few days beyond that, and the sunset is getting close as well. Micah, do you have anything to, anything to add on this?
I do not.
So at this time, we'll just extend it then to our, our next meeting, is that your request, your intention, recommendation?
We, we ask for your support for the resolution that's on the agenda to approve-
Okay.
-amendment, amendments three and four. Amendment three is simply a time extension amendment, amendment four lays out the, the path that has been negotiated to move forward.
Okay.
So we ask for your approval of that resolution.
Hey, Sam, and Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Those of you that are in the council chambers, it would be helpful to the ones on the phone call, if you would focus more on using your loud voices and less on using the microphones, because it's a conference phone that needs to pick up your voice, and so you get kinda quiet when you, when you're speaking. So a little louder would be helpful, I think, for all others involved.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the amendments, is that?
Need a motion to approve, need a motion to approve the resolution which adopts the two amendments.
Okay, I will make that motion. Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor and approved, seconded, is there any discussion regarding approving of that resolution? Any questions, anyone? I see no one gearing up, so I'll take a roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
And a motion carries. Let's move on then to Item D, the zoning ordinance amendment. The public hearing is a continuation from April 15 and May 6. Are there any public comments at this time?
Yep. We can proceed with opening the hearing, and we can have, we can now have the hearing, and then Todd will open up the lines. Kervin has anything to say, that now would be the time for that, and the hearing can close, and then if everyone's okay with it, we can move forward with, with first reading. We should not wait second or third.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
Roll call.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye. All right. Kervin, do you have anything you'd like to comment on at this time?
No, just awaiting on issues with that, and really calling now. Okay, yeah, I don't think we're, I'm waiting for my lawyer to say it's, and bless it, and then from then on, pretty well, I think we've got a path anyway, on how we're gonna go about it, so. Garfield, like you said, that should be a no-brainer here by the end of the month, so, and hopefully.
Okay. Todd, I see some names I didn't see here before. Is there anyone listening in that has a public comment at this time?
It's all staff, except for Frank.
Okay, very good. Seeing there are no more public comments, motion to close, please.
So moved.
Support.
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye. All right, so then we move on then to the first reading of the rezoning feat of 1401 South Second Avenue, the former Sunset Motel property, from arterial commercial to residential multiple, the remainder from commercial residential C1H, contingent on the rezoning of the existing mobile home park, parcel 004335000 to MH, as Kervin just alluded to, that we're waiting on that, so.
I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just, I wanted to state, we did receive a signed zoning, rezoning application for the Taylor Park, and working on, that's, that's not for, planning, and they have been the planning commission making up that.
Any other comments or questions regarding the? Then we will move forward on that, schedule a second hearing then for-
And to close-
Oh, no, that's right, you said not to do that.
Now we closed the hearing, we now approve-
You want to approve the amendments.
Second reading will happen automatically on June 3.
Okay, very good.
All right, moved to approve the first reading.
Second. Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye. All right. Joel Gasing has joined us, so let's move back then to Item 5B, the resolution acquiring insurance for volunteer and part-time emergency services personnel. Anything you'd like to share with us, and Joel?
Nothing for the meeting that we had, where we talked about, you know, what the benefits of this would be to emergency services, otherwise there's nothing new to add, except for there's a small change in the total numbers. We had 54 members in the services, we're down to 52 because of some of retirements.
Okay.
Do you guys have any question?
To move this forward, we should really have a motion to approve it then, and then for the discussion after that. So I'll entertain a motion for that at this time.
Make a motion to approve? I'll support.
So moved.
Okay, and just to be clear, this is approval of a resolution to acquire the life insurance for emergency services staff, not otherwise covered by the City of Sheldon.
Do we need to, think the word require, shouldn't it be provide? I'm just, because required-
I say require, it's acquire.
Acquiring, okay.
I may have said require, it is acquire.
When you said require-
Yeah, no, I read that right, it is acquired here.
Okay.
If I did say that, I read it wrong. So, resolution to acquire life insurance.
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question for clarification, please. Way I understand the resolution to read is that the price for this is a lock for three years, but it's actually a one-year contract renewable. Is that correct?
I'll defer that to Joel.
That is correct. The city is not locked in, it's the company providing the insurance is locked into their rate for three years.
So each year, there'll need to be action from the Council to re-improve?
I'll answer that, Mayor, if that's all right.
Yes, yeah.
The, the action each year would be part of the budget workshops, might not be discussed specifically, but it could be.
All right.
Very good, that, that'd be fine, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, let's take, a roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye. All right, that motion carries. All right, Connor, now we're gonna move up to discussion about your, your request, and so, I'd just like to open up the floor for comments, let me just get something brought up here a minute. Okay. Sam, you wanna get us started here?
So Micah can weigh in if he has anything to add. Here's the situation, we have the city code, the code of ordinances, and the city also has adopted zoning code. So, we have a conflict in the, in the two codes. So this is in a residential zoning district, under the, under the zoning code that's adopted, and it's, no. Under the code, under the code of ordinances, it's clear that it's allowable if the city council says yes. And, so, Micah and I have discussed this, the city code is in the process of being updated, a full sale update, it's going to take some time. The zoning code is in the process of minor up, or minor updates, approximately 13 ordinance amendments for the zoning code that are, that are being incorporated into books, we have several zoning amendments that are, are going to be considered, prepared for the planning commission. So, if you choose to say yes to this, Micah and I recommend that it be a relatively short term. In the, in the resolution, I put five years, and that's quite long, because it could put us in a situation ending up in a, in a conflict with the, with the codes that are being, that are being applied. It's important to know, and I really appreciate Connor's letter, I appreciate the way he's handling this, I know the city isn't upset with him, we're simply doing our jobs. He's the only person that has requested chickens over the last number of months, there have been other, have been, one in particular that I'm aware of, where somebody had asked me about having chickens. I'm aware of another place in town that has, I recently became aware of that has chickens, and I decided not to have two chickens, same council, and that's gonna have, have to be discussed as well. So, so, Micah, do you have anything to add to what I said?
No, I do not.
Written resolution for your consideration, if you choose to approve it, I'd recommend, you know, probably a one or two-year term, and then have it come, have it come back.
And just to clarify, this resolution speaks only to the property at 2530 Park Street.
Only this property.
So any other requests, we could, this could open up a flood of requests, and I'm not opposed to that, but just so everyone knows, this may be the one, the first of several that come our way.
And if, if I could say one more thing?
Yep.
It's, you could actually say no to all of those requests now under the zoning code, that's the, that's the challenge that you're having, one code that gives you a process that allows you to say yes, you have another code, set of codes, that explicitly says no, unless you do a rezon. So that's, that's the change.
Again, in keeping with Robert Rules of Order, let's, I'll entertain a motion first, and then we can have further discussion.
I would move that the application be approved as, according to the criteria that were put out in the memorandum.
Okay. Is there a support for that?
Is there a timeframe with that?
The written resolution is for five years. I, I would like to see it at one year, because with this being such a new adaptation of the code, that it gives us ample opportunities to revisit, and to reevaluate how this is affecting our city, and the neighbors, and everything else that comes with it.
I just think we're gonna end up with a whole mess of people wanting chickens, and then it's gonna go to miniature pigs and whatnot all down the road. Goats, I think it's just gonna end up being a nightmare. Our, our zoning is, talks about being a, you can't have it, so I think we have to abide by our zoning ordinance. So I, I think we're opening up a whole, whole, a whole nother avenue I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go down. I, it's a good idea he's got, I'm not against that, I just don't feel that we can do one and then not do everyone else that comes along the line.
I think the nature of what Sam had alluded to in, in his open about this subject is the, that we're going to be under a rewrite of, of the code sections and of city policy, and I think those rewrites need to happen because times and situations change, and where we're sitting, I think our, our codes have been largely untouched for a number of years. So, I think in that interim time, I would be okay with putting the onus on us as a council, and I'm certainly not going to accept every single application that comes in, but I would be comfortable accepting this particular application at this time for one year.
This is Pete, I would echo that sentiment, considering that the neighbors were consulted, and there were no objections, and it looks like a worthy project, so I think it has to be in cooperation with the surrounding neighbors, and this one seems to be. And I would welcome a shorter term, I didn't realize it was five years, I thought it was one or two years. I would suggest being one year.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Tom.
My, my personal opinion is, is that we have a, a responsible party who wants to, to venture into a new area for the city, and I'm gonna bet on him to do what he says, and to abide by good practice, and I think he'll set a good example for others who may want to venture out into, into this area as well. So, I realize that there might be pitfalls ahead of us, but I think it's, I think it's a good bet, so I support it.
Sam, do we know if People's Bank has been made aware?
I'm, I'm made them aware. I've filed aware.
And no complaints there?
No concerns.
They're quite a ways away, but they're our business in that area.
I think it's important to point out that this is not a change in ordinance nor a change in code. This is a one-time action that we are considering here, and that the outcome of this particular request does not necessarily indicate the favor of the council or of the ordinances moving forward, one way or the other. I've seen the property. I've seen the setback. I, if, if he would have been registering the same request here downtown, I don't know that I would be supportive of that just because of the proximity situation. Now, there's a lot of semantics here to get into that I don't think we need to, but I think that that is the reason why I would be in favor of this particular case.
A question that I have, a couple of years ago, we had a situation on 16th Street, and that was with larger animals. Does this action that we're taking today, what, how would that play out in a situation such as that? I think that was before you were here, I think, or where you just started, Sam?
No.
I think that's before your time.
Mr. Mayor, from what I recall, that, that particular property was duly zoned. I believe it was partially zoned R M and partially zoned agricultural. And I also believe it involved larger animals.
Correct.
And, and the zoning ordinance actually does allow in agricultural zoning for a small number of small animals and a smaller number of large animals. So I'm not sure that this request has a lot to do with what that request was or what that situation was.
Okay.
This is Megan McDonald. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Megan.
Yeah. I just, a comment moving forward, you know, if it helps your decision-making down the road. My boys will be in eighth and 10th grade next year. We have family that farms outside of town, so when they leave for high school, their poultry is leaving too. I'm, I'm not a chicken farmer and don't intend to be. You know, Connor, when he started school this year, really was engaged in F S A and really, really enjoys being on the farm. And that, that truly is his goal of this. And so, you know, when, when you mentioned the five years, the first thought was, oh, they'll be gone by then, because they will be. I, so, you know, moving forward, that, that piece of agriculture and F S A and that kind of project is really what he's looking for. If that influences your decisions moving forward.
Okay. Any other comments?
What, this maybe is a Micah question. What happens in a year and a half, two years, when we have all of our codes up to date? If we would approve this for a five-year, how does that play into when we get those codes updated?
If the council would see fit to approve this request for five years, I think there would be a strong argument that, that decision would be grandfathered in, notwithstanding the code changes. It depends a little bit on the wording of the new code, but often our city codes have provisions that account for what we would call non-conforming uses or non-conforming applications. So most likely, there would be a grandfathering provision.
Okay, thank you.
As, as I understand it, the resolution does state five years, but my assumption is we're just approving this for the one-year.
Well, I think Pete, yeah, Pete would have to re, redo his motion.
Yeah, because the motion was made to approve the resolution.
Yes.
I thought I did amend that resolution for a one-year.
In your comments, I think so too. So if we, as we move this to a vote-
But I think you'd have to amend that as a motion, correct, Angie? You can't just say it in comment. I think you'd have to amend it in a motion.
Okay. So Pete has made a motion to amend his initial motion to limit it to a one-year sunset, rather than a five as stated in the, in the, in the resolution that it's written. You approved it as a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. Would you also approve that then, second that motion? Okay. So we have a motion approval to approve the amendment, changing it to a one-year timeframe. So we'll take a roll call on that, first of all.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
No.
Brewster?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion will carry. Are there any further questions before we go to vote on this resolution as we've just changed it?
What? That was the vote.
That was the vote.
I thought we were approving the amendment, and now we would approve the resolution.
We didn't mean to approve-
Oh, okay. All right.
It's just the resolution passed.
Subject to the one-year timeframe.
All right. Connor? Congratulations, Connor. Congrat, yes, my congratulations to you. You are kind of the test model here. And you, you've said you're going to do well, and I have no reason to doubt you, but your, your actions here are kind of paving the way for others that may follow behind and want to do the same thing. So I hope it goes well for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I will not disappoint you guys.
All right. Very good. And you're free to leave any time now, but you're welcome to stay too, if you want to participate further. All right, so then our new six B rather than six A, we need, we have an update from the S E D C to consider support for the Economic Recovery Incentives Program they're, they're rolling, hoping to roll out. Who's going to speak to that? Kurt or Chantel?
Hey, Mayor, can you guys hear us okay? We're in the S E D C boardroom, but we can walk next door to if you're having trouble hearing us.
They were over there because-
I can hear you fine.
We have had a couple people leave, so you're welcome to come join. We're under the 10 maximum here. I guess I prefer that myself.
Okay, we'll walk over real quick. Right there.
Very good. You okay? Can you hear me all right? Very good. So thanks for the time, and I got Chantel Ostra, Chamber Director, along with us here this afternoon too. So as you know, the last 45 days have been weird, to say the least, as far as the way we're living and doing business here as a community, as a region, as a state, as a nation. It affects us here, and we, it impacts us mostly at a local level, and that's kind of what we're here to kind of talk about here today. You know, we, you know, come March 15, you know, we were doing business as normal. We were planning, well, Chantel was planning ladies' night out amongst a number of other things, and based on the impact of COVID and the, the, the impact of shutting things down locally, we had to divert our attention relatively quickly and, and try to turn into recovery mode. And with that, we've done a lot of things, both on the city and the S E D C, but I wanted to start just by saying a thank you on behalf of our organization and the City of Sheldon to all of our businesses who have been impacted. We've got a number of business owners even here in this room. You guys have been impacted as well. The way you guys had to do business was you had to adapt, and having your doors closed is challenging. And we all realize that, and what we can do to assist at the S E D C and city level is to do what we can to make sure that the adversity you're facing, we do it together. And I think that's as a community what our goal is. So secondly, we wanted just to send a thank you out to the community members because, again, we're affected as well as, as consumers, and trying to consume our, trying to buy product at our businesses, and we're not able to do it the way we were before. That changes the way we live our life. So our community members have been very supportive, and I think our business owners would, would replicate that sentiment. And, you know, we have some numbers that we're going to report on an incentive that we did as a, as a kind of a reaction to COVID. It was our receipt program, our 10% receipt program, where we put, we collected receipts and provided a 10% return through Sheldon dollars back into the community. We have some pretty shocking numbers that Chantel is going to deliver us here momentarily. And then I just also wanted just to say thank you to the staff at S E D C, the Board of Directors, City Council, Sam and the team at the City Office, having our doors shut too. And, you know, we're, we're in public office. You know, I've been in public business since 2001, and we're just used to having face-to-face conversations with people, and now we're, we're totally doing business differently as well. So the way that everybody's been able to adapt, having these Zoom meetings even as part of that, we appreciate the support from everybody and, and moving forward. We'll see where this thing takes us. So with that, our attention on the S E D C level has, has really been reactionary. I mean, turning our attention to, to assisting our businesses first and foremost, from COVID relief, from, you know, the grants and the opportunities for loans through Iowa Economic Development Authority, the CARES Act that came out as a response to that. There's a lot of information, and some of it overwhelming for our businesses to have to, to digest and to understand it as a whole. So we turned into reactionary, providing as much high-level information that we could, partnering with our lenders here in town to, to apply for the PPP funding, which for Sheldon and our businesses has been very successful. We have some really good stories out there as far as that PPP funding, helping our businesses. So when this thing does turn away, we get back some sort of normalcy again, we're hoping that our businesses respond and we can get back to normal without losing anybody. I mean, that's our goal here, is we don't want to lose anybody through the process. So, so providing high-level information to those individuals who need it. We've created a Google document that we have pinned to our Facebook page that provides just a one-stop shop for anybody who has any, has any questions about COVID, the relief that's out there. But most importantly, if you have an, an update on how your business is operating on a day-to-day basis, whether it's hours or curb-side pickup, delivery, we're updating that as needed to make sure that the community as a whole has an opportunity, just a one-stop shop, click on that, they have an idea of what's going on here in Sheldon. And then just providing the, the general information that our community needs in response to what we're dealing with here. So with that, I want to turn it over to our Chamber Director, Chanel Mattis, our, excuse me, Chanel, our new, our new Chamber Director. There's Chanel and there's Chantel. It's totally back and forth. So Chantel Ostra here, we have some outstanding promotions that we've done in response to the, sorry, there's Chantel, but very, very high level from the, the receipt program that we've, we've talked about. And then we have an outstanding opportunity here with a promotion that we feel is very, very high level. It's going to be something I think is going to shock some people, how we can put some dollars back into our, to our economy here locally. So with that, I want to turn it over to, to Chantel to come on up, provide us an overview of what's going on. So thanks, Chantel.
Okay. Thank you for your time and allowing us to bring an update and a proposal to you today. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. I just have a few items that I would like to update you on. First, recently, we ran a promotion to help support local shopping that ended on April 30th. For every $100 worth of qualifying retail and restaurant receipts turned in by customers from purchases made in Sheldon, they receive $10 in Sheldon dollars. We are pleased to report that in just over a month's time, we received over $250,000 in receipts. And in turn, S E D C was able to put over $20,000 right back into our local economy with Sheldon dollars. It's so great to know that during the difficult time that our restaurants and retailers were facing, people stepped up and supported local businesses. We are very grateful to the Sheldon Marketing Committee, DK Plastics, Fred's Plumbing and Heating, Kent Nutrition, Maintainer, Mid-American Energy, North Star Community Credit Union, Potma Sigma Construction, Premier Communications, Rome Grinding Solutions, Rosenboom Machine and Tool, and Van White Trucking for seeing the benefit of this promotion to our community and assisting us with the funding. Second, we're excited to announce that the Sheldon Chamber and Development Corporation, along with Northwest Iowa Development, has partnered with ShopWhereILive.com to create a local, regional, online marketplace. This is an adaptable platform fit for most small businesses. Businesses can sell their products, service, gift cards, virtual products, and more. They may post and manage up to 25 items on the site for no charge. In today's online economy, and with the adoptions that need to be made with the COVID-19, more and more purchases are being made online. This platform will allow customers access to discovering all that the area businesses have to offer, and easily purchase them online with the options of local pickup, delivery, or shipping. We look forward to the launch of Shop Where I Live Northwest Iowa soon. And we do have a handout, if you're interested, later. The third update is that at the beginning of April, we launched a one-stop shop for gift card purchases online. Customers were able to purchase $25 gift cards from as many participating Sheldon businesses as they would like. We inform the businesses, and then they mail out the gift cards, and then every two weeks we cut checks to the businesses that have had gift card sales. There's no cost to the businesses to participate. And to date, just over $4,000 in gift cards have been sold. So any questions on those updates? Lastly, we would like to share some details with you regarding our proposal of comeback cash. We would like to propose a promotion offering the sale of $250,000 in comeback cash at a 30% discount to the community. This promotion would encourage consumer spending at a very high level and would be a big boost of confidence to our local businesses. This program is similar in nature to our Merry Money program, but on steroids, and would be of no cost to participating businesses. A quick overview of the program. We would offer the sale of the comeback cash at a 30% discount to the community. There would be a maximum purchase of $500 per household, and the total comeback cash that would be sold is $250,000. Cash would be sold over a two- or three-day time span once businesses are close to 100% operation. We would like to provide businesses equal opportunity, and we had a great announcement from our governor today, so we're excited that more of our businesses will be opening very soon. We would have a one-month time period for all of the cash to be spent, again, when businesses are close to 100% operation. Sale of cash and expiration of cash dates are to be determined, again, just with, when businesses are close to 100% operation. We would like this to be a collaborative effort between the City of Sheldon and the S E D C. S E D C would execute and administer the promotion. To execute this promotion, we will need $75,000 in funding to cover the 30% discount. The S E D C Board has met and approved funding of $40,000 for this promotion.
I can get down further.
Down further? Okay. The S E D C Board has met and approved funding of $40,000 for this promotion using funds available from the revolving loan fund. We are asking the city to consider a matching fund of $40,000. With contributions from the city and the S E D C, it would allow for 100% of the funds to benefit participating businesses. Finalizing the details of the promotion, we're working, again, on dates of sale and expiration of cash, which will determine when businesses are close to 100% operation. Upon approval of funding, letters will be sent to the businesses with details asking for participation, and upon approval of funding, marketing of the promotion will begin. So any questions on that?
Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items regarding this. As of the end of April, our projected demolition and disposal, or also for the fund, cash balance projection, about $5,000. And this is before the budgeted $120,000 inclusion from local option sales tax that was going to happen this fiscal year. Thanks, in, thanks in part to Mid-American on the Thermacell Building, to Sturler's and to Kent Lorenz with PJs and Sunset. Don't project, don't project the need for that $120,000 in this, this fiscal year. So the transfer that does not need to be made, that doesn't need, that doesn't mean that the local option sales tax fund is flush with cash, but we do believe that it can handle a $40,000 outlay for this. And we also believe that it, it could handle, probably be talking about it the next meeting. We also believe in addition to this, it could handle an outlay for fireworks. We have that discussion probably at the next meeting. So I, I think it's something that we can, we can support. We don't, not know, of course, what the impact will be coming fiscal year of, of COVID. We do know that we are scheduled to finish out this year very strong. strong. We had local option sales tax come in at a higher than, higher than anticipated rate for the first, prior to this hitting. So, we're going to be okay for this fiscal year, and this is something that...
I would like to just make a couple comments. On behalf of the city, I want to just commend the SDC for the way you have stepped up and responded in so many good ways. The information you've shared, the programs you've already laid out, and now this one. I think this was unprecedented in the state for initiating economic revival. And so, thank you so much. It's been a joy working with you over these years, and this really, I mean, this tops them all, I think, myself. So, any questions from anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. For all, for all the reasons that have already been put out there as far as this proposal being good for, for business, I think it should be noted that this is, this opportunity is good for all of Sheldon. If you think about the fact that this is a 30% discount on the money that citizens will have to pay to capture $500 per household, I think this meets a need on, on the individual level to, to help them during a time where they may have some income challenges going on, to be able to go out and be able to purchase some of their basic needs during this time. So, I, I commend not only the effort and the opportunity to help our businesses, but I think it should be noted that it's going to help our citizens out, especially those who are having economic challenges right now.
And I think the, the opportunity to realize a 30% savings has set Northwest Iowans to Sioux Falls and Sioux City for a great number of years. And now that we can not only take this 30% directly off the top, but then in addition to our already fair prices here in Sheldon, I think it's going to be a great, not only boon to our economy for now, just the immediate impact, but then moving forward, getting people into town and shopping here for their supplies that didn't already do so, and didn't understand, or at least give it an opportunity. And this is going to be a great way to roll out the welcome mat, to let people know that Sheldon's open for business.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted just to mention, and Chantel had kind of, kind of mentioned it, there is no cost to businesses here too. And Merry Money, you know, we talked about it being comparable to Merry Money. Thing with Merry Money, business does, the business does take a 5% hit on sale. So, here, we're putting $250,000 on the market, and there's no cost for our business, and as Wayne pointed out, a 30% discount to the consumer. So, we certainly think it's a great opportunity, one for the consumer spending confidence, but no cost for our business as well. So, a shout-out to our Revolving Loan Fund Committee, you know, the business of our RLF committee is, we're in the, we're in the business of providing high-risk loans to businesses as they get started out. And it's been a very successful program over, over the last number of years. But, you know, we've got a good group of people there who think outside of the box, and how can we leverage those dollars to, in challenging times such as this. And those $40,000 through the SDC are from the RLF account, and it's, it's a perfect opportunity to utilize those dollars, and it comes as a unanimous recommendation, not only from the RLF committee, but from the SDC Board of Directors too, to support this for, for all the reasons that you guys just got done mentioning, and, and for how Chantel had laid it out there. So, we're excited. There's a few things that we've got to get ironed out yet. The governor did make some good announcements today, so I think it might expedite things a little bit. Summer activities look to be able to start for baseball and softball on June 1. On Friday, it looks like our theater's going to get open, which is exciting. Wedding receptions can start again at the Billion. I mean, that's, that's great news, to start getting people coming into our community. Yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be restrictions to all of this, but we're making strides in the right direction, I guess is my point. And then next week too, as far as bars and stuff, you know, that had been currently limited just to take out and delivery, and now reopen for indoor seating as well. So, we're making strides, so we're hoping to be able to launch the sale of this sooner than later, because as Chantel had pointed out, we want to make sure our businesses are at equal opportunity to accept the comeback cash as well. So, I make that comment as well.
What you just said sparked a question in my mind, when you said, "our businesses", are you, is this going to be a chamber members-only program, or will it be like the receipt program where it was open to any business, any business that...
Yeah, so we posed that to our SDC Board. The other promotions that we've been running up to this point have been for all, for all Sheldon businesses, that has not been preferred for SDC members only. The Board felt very strongly this would be an SDC member benefit, to be a member of SDC, so would just impact the businesses who are currently members of SDC. So, that's our role, and we try to put ourselves out there to, to have advantages. I think this is certainly an opportunity for people to take full advantage of, of the opportunity.
And if maybe someone is listening that is a business owner that is not a member of the chamber, would they have the opportunity to sign up yet and be available to participate in this?
Absolutely.
All right.
So, all things being equal, can you put a timeline on the rollout?
Based on what we know now?
Yeah.
So, we've already implemented some, some communications with printing of the cash. I know we've got a phased-in approach, we're going to be considering is, when we open up our community building, that'll go into, you know, that'll go into consideration of how we do this. We've talked about Christmas in July, just kind of an outliner, but we hope to be done, we hope to be operational before that. I mean, I don't know what the date of that is, mid-July, but we hope sometime in June, we're selling cash. And then, the idea behind it, Wayne, is that we would have about a 30-day window, once you purchase the cash, spend it. So, we'll have a high influx of dollars in a short amount of time when, when our businesses really need the cash flow right now. So, we provide that.
There would be a little bit of administration time with getting the letters to the businesses, and getting those back, and all of that. So, we would need some time for that.
Well, then, what are you doing standing here?
Yeah. Prove this, so I can get the word.
Sam, you have a comment?
I just wanted to make one quick comment. I had to step out for a minute, and I apologize if I say, I'm saying something that's already been said, but I did hear Tom Eggers' comment regarding the ability to buy necessities. Yes, this is for necessities, but it's for certain type of necessities, because groceries and gas, my understanding, would be exempt from the comeback cash. Groceries and gas would be exempt. So, there's lots of other types of necessities, but I just wanted to mention that for Tom's benefit, if that hadn't been said.
Okay. Good, thank you. Are we ready to move forward with this?
So, what is the move? Are we...
I think we make, we can take action on it today, right?
So, are we moving to contribute the $40,000? Is that what we're doing here?
The motion would be to authorize the release of the, of $40,000 within this fiscal year.
Okay. Well, I would move that we do that.
Okay, do we have a support for that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Kurt, do you definitely see the $250,000 flying off the shelf?
At 30%, at 30%, I do. Now, the max is $500 per household, so if you do the math, I think it's 500 households that it could impact. So, that's, it's a wide range of people. So, we're confident in it, and if it's not just Sheldon people, the others, the other end of this is, it brings people to Sheldon to buy it and spend local as well. So, I don't think it excludes people outside of here of cash. We want to make sure, our goal would be for it all somehow, some way.
How much Merry Money last year?
$125,000. So, we're doubling it. And, you know, Chantel had just mentioned that the, the Sheldon Dollars receipt program, if you caught that number, was $250,000 of receipts that was turned in, that we accepted. I think if we went into the numbers that we didn't accept, I think it would have exceeded over $300,000. So, with that $250,000 that was spent locally in about a 30-day window, concluding on April 30, another $20,000, just over $20,000 in Sheldon dollars funded by SDC was in turn put back into local economy through the Sheldon dollars. So, it's a good amount of spending going on, which is encouraging as we're kind of running these promotions.
I do have one question, trying to follow the money trail. You sell the money for 30%, so that's, and the $80,000, okay, I think I have my math figured out. I was just wondering where all the money was going to come from, but I think I, I made a mental mistake.
Get it, okay. Six, we'll take 80, yeah, $75,000 essentially to fund the $250 at that discount, and then the other $5,000 would be used for administrative, for costs of printing out of comeback cash, et cetera.
And marketing.
And marketing, advertising.
Ready for a vote? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Very good. We hope it goes well, and I anticipate that it will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kurt, you're up again, to consider resolution of support for a local incentive for potential multi-housing project, emphasizing the word "potential".
Yeah, yep. So, what we have for your consideration is a resolution of support and an application for abatement on potential Phase II of Prairie Trail Village out east. If you recall back in about 2017, we rezoned a portion of ground out there, about 4.1 acres, to multifamily, sold it to Steve Booty and Eagle Construction for, for a two-phase potential project. Phase one is, is in the ground and completed. What we're looking at right now is the potential for Phase II out there, and what we're considering today, if approved, is this resolution and a local incentive component, which will accompany the application submitted to Iowa Economic Development Authority for the consideration of the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program. This is just a process that has to go, we have to go through, and funding will go a long way in determining if Phase II happens. Phase II is not guaranteed. This will go a long way in helping us determine if Phase II could happen. Funding was approved through IEDA for Phase I. It is a very, very competitive process. About two weeks ago, they just released notification that they were allocating $10 million for, for the fund, and that goes across the whole state of Iowa. It's always been competitive. There is not enough fun, funding to support all projects submitted. We have a good ace in the hole with Steve Booty and Eagle Construction, because he's a great developer, and he'll be also submitting applications on behalf of other communities that he has developments in. And we have a few neighboring communities, such as Spencer, Spirit Lake, and Orange City as the most recent. So, so if approved, this resolution of support and the, the application for the abatement will accompany his, his application down, down to the state, and then we kind of sit wait from, from there.
All right. To get this on the floor, I'll take a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second, and now we can discuss it. Are there questions that you have for Kurt, or comments you would like to make at this time? I guess my question, one question I have is, you know, of that $10 million pie, how big of a piece are we talking here in terms of this, or don't we know yet the numbers at this time?
Yeah, I'm not, not 100% sure how it's allocated. It's not apples to apples. It's really contingent on the application. So, they'll, they'll try to spread it, spread the wealth as much as they possibly can, because they understand workforce housing is so important to the state. But the applications will separate themselves, and the letters of support that accompany them will be kind of helping that separator. So, we don't know dollar-wise.
Mm-hmm.
Wait.
Okay.
Kurt, it is fair to say that if this, this funding does not go through, if this project doesn't get done?
I don't think it'll get done with this funding cycle through Iowa Workforce Housing, or, excuse me, through Iowa Work, through either Iowa Workforce Housing Development. However, another funding cycle could come, which we're confident, and then we just have to reapply. So, it's really going to be contingent upon the funding.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all right, then if not, I will take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
All right, very good. Exciting. Thank you, Kurt. Moving on then in our item 6C, we need to open a public hearing regarding a budget amendment, amendments perhaps. Sam, do you need to speak to this prior to the hearing? Okay. Then we, we'll have a public, notice of a public hearing regarding amending the fiscal year 1919, 2019, 2020 city budget. That hearing is open now. Are there any comments? There's no one in the room. I don't see anyone else added. Am I correct in that, Todd, that there's no one online that's going to join us? If there are, please speak up.
Same people we had, same group we had earlier, Mayor.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think it'd be appropriate to have Angie do just a very brief rundown while the hearing is still open.
Okay.
If anybody has any comments, then they can weigh in.
Are you prepared to do that, Ange?
Sure.
Okay. Get her a microphone, if we could, please.
The biggest changes in the budget is the airport project not happening, which was a couple million dollars. Expenses I had in this budget, some debt payment for Streetscape and Sheldon Crossing, which actually was paid off last June, so those have been removed. There's a little bit of change for some different COVID expenses that we've had to incur, but overall, the balances are still looking okay. General fund cash balance, I do anticipate to be over $100,000. So...
All right. Since there are no additional comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. And then if we could, move on to considering the, approving the amendments. Take a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, that carries. All right, let's move on then to reports, first of all. Kevin, I understood, I see that your name is on the screen. Are you with us at this time? Kevin Miller?
Yes, I am.
We are ready for your report.
Okay, perfect. Can anyone, everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So, I first off want to say publicly, thank you to the fine men and women of the Sheldon Ambulance Team. I want to congratulate them and wish them a happy EMS Week. Even though we're not having our SCAP supper like we usually would during this COVID time, I do want to send out my well wishes for a happy EMS Week to them. I do want to just highlight a few things that are on the memo that was given to you guys. I did run a new report today, and we are actually 17 calls ahead of this time last year. I also wanted to point out that we do have four EMS students that are working towards certification. So, the goal would be that hopefully by June or July, they will be completed with their certification testing, pending on testing availability due to COVID. We also have an update on medical director. As most of you know, Dr. Zali did take a new position, and therefore, we had to go on the search for a new medical director, and we appointed Dr. Amy Winger as our medical director. We also started... We also started advertising for a new part-time position for SCAT, and are planning on using the funds that the county graciously gave us for that position. And in the future, and in future budget planning sessions, we are going to be looking to make that position into a full-time position to help align with staffing needs as they arise in the upcoming years. I did want to give you guys an update on our third ambulance that should be here by July 1. It looks like they are making good progress, hasn't been held up too much with everything that's going on with COVID. And then my last highlight I want to give to you guys is about the void and ambulance and those conversations. Right now, due to COVID, everything is on hold because of legislation, and it sounds like talking with void and ambulance, we are going to wait on any further discussion until that goes through legislation fully, and we have a better understanding of what the state is wanting from us. Do you guys have any questions or comments to leave?
In your memo, Kevin, you mentioned you have 21 SCAT members. Does that include the four that are undergoing training right now? Do I understand that correctly? The four that you mentioned?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And what is your goal in terms of, what would you consider to be fully staffed?
Fully staffed is a hard term to define. It honestly depends, you know, on how much time people can take and what their schedules look like. On any given week, you know, I could take a lot of call, and maybe the next week, my other duties and responsibilities don't allow me to take as much call, so it really depends on the timeframe in terms of that. I do know that at one time, SCAT had a waiting list for volunteers, as well as most of our emergency services, and that is no longer the case. We are actively recruiting, as you might have seen through our social media, and we are just looking for anywhere from drivers, EMRs, EMTs, paramedics, and RMs.
So you're looking less for a maximum and more just trying to get a minimum?
In a sense, yes.
Any other questions for Kevin? If not, Kevin, I just want to commend you and all of the volunteers that are working for SCAT for making that work in this community, especially in light of the COVID situation we're dealing with currently. I know that adds another level of stress, but my commendations to you guys, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, guys. Stay safe.
You bet. All right, moving on. Jared, you've stuck with us, I'm assuming, all this time, and it's your chance to shine. Jared Johnson, O'Brien County EM...
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. This is Jared. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, very good. Again, this is Jared Jackson with O'Brien County Emergency Management. Thanks for giving me some time this afternoon to talk a little bit about some of the COVID updates, and then also to have some discussion about some of the reopening plans that you're starting to see around other counties and also with O'Brien County. Last week, I had a chance to meet with the O'Brien County Board of Supervisors to review a reopening plan. Around our area, there are a variety of county courthouses that are planning to reopen or have already reopened, and we've, myself along with other EMAs, have had some discussion over what different counties are planning, and use some different templates and guidance from the states, along with some guidance that I've seen from other states, to create a phased approach reopening plan for the O'Brien County Supervisors to review for the courthouse. I think the phased approach is also something that can be used by other facilities and city offices as well. So my plan this afternoon is just to give you a little background about the over-the-phased approach reopening plan. So what we're looking at doing right now in O'Brien County is starting with Phase One on, using a tentative date of June 10. With the reopening plan, we've put together three different phases. The first phase is limited access. Visitor access would be by appointment only. The second phase would be having one entrance open to the facility, and then also continued mitigation strategies. And then the third phase would be returning to the new normal, regular operations at that point in time. With each phase, we are, we have a variety of mitigation strategies identified, but the first phase would be, would be the highest level of mitigation strategies with the limited access. What we're looking at doing is having access only by appointment. The public would still be encouraged to use alternative methods to do business, which for the city hall, could be alternative methods to do business with the city hall offices, such as online, or by phone, or using the outside Dropbox. Wearing of masks is, has been a topic amongst a variety of different public facilities. Right now, with our Phase One for the courthouse, we have it at, using recommendation for mask and not a requirement. There are some counties that are going to require masks within their courthouse. After talking with the county attorney, the guidance that we received is that if we were to require masks, we would have to have some available for the public if they did not bring their own. What some counties are looking at doing is, they're looking at, if you don't bring your own mask, there will be one available for purchase. But at this point in time, what we're planning to do is just have the mask as a recommendation, but that could possibly change if the COVID situation worsens. In addition to those items for Phase One, we are looking at having only one visitor per office at a time. The different offices can decide what will work best based on social distancing guidance. In addition, the departments at the courthouse have also received plexiglass shields, or like a sneeze guard or cough guard, to help as an additional secondary measure for protection in case somebody were to come in and sneeze or cough in their department. We've also looked at restricting the hours of business. So for Phase One, we're looking at having things kind of closed an hour early to assist with cleaning at the end of the day. For the courthouse, different departments will have to do extra cleaning. You know, each individual that works in the public facility knows what items they, what items they touch the most, so they're kind of the best option for cleaning the different areas that they know should be cleaned after each day. For Phase Two, Phase Two would be having one entrance open with mitigation strategies maintained. So Phase Two, you would have some of your mitigation strategies maintained, similar hours of operation where you would kind of shut down things a little bit early to allow for additional cleaning at the end of the day, and then each office would decide how many individuals they could have in their office following the six feet social distancing guidance, which if we find out that the guy, that social distancing guidance changes over time, we can make changes to the plan as they come up. And then Phase Three would be returning to the new normal, going back to regular business operations, having the entrances open that need to be. And then there could be some offices that decide to continue some of the mitigation strategies, such as, you know, keeping up the plexiglass shields and doing some of those other measures. We have also ordered extra hand sanitizer dispensers to have in different locations throughout the courthouse, and that can be done in other facilities as well, if you can find the supplies for the hand sanitizer dispensers. I know it can be, that can be a challenge at this point in time. For additional mitigation strategies, we are looking at taking temperatures of visitors that enter the facility. Some facilities will have a threshold that if you, your temperature exceeds a certain threshold, such as 100 degrees or 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit, you will not be allowed entry to that building at that point in time. There are also some facilities that are looking at having a greeter at the entrance, which the greeter's duties would be to identify if they've had a, if they have an appointment. They'd also assist with screening the individual, asking the individual some questions about COVID-19, taking their temperature, and then also helping direct them to the office that they need to go to, which at this point in time, O'Brien County Public Health staff are going to be assisting as the screeners at the courthouse, and will be allowing entry into the east door of the courthouse, which will be available for the general public. Along with these mitigation measures, we're also recommending that you have additional signage that just promotes the COVID-19 guidance, along with signs that promote, you know, the social distancing. I did, I saw some really nice signage from SCDC office. I don't know who made the infographics or the signs, but you know, the floor markings for where you should stand, or the window decals, those looked really nice, so that's a really good idea. It's also a good idea to have a sign on the door that states, you know, if you are experiencing any of these symptoms, or if you're sick, please stay home. If there's a way that we can help you over the phone, that's the route that we would like to go if you're feeling sick. For when to reopen, that's, that's kind of the topic that I know a lot of people are looking around. Like I mentioned, O'Brien County, the tentative date for O'Brien County is June 10. The Board of Supervisors are planning to review that a week before, just to see if that's still our tentative date, or if we need to change those things, change some of the things around. I heard some of the counties around us are looking at opening on June 1. I guess my personal recommendation would be to open after that, to avoid the potential for individuals to come to the city hall and try to vote during the primary elections. That's one reason that we are looking at opening after June 2, was to avoid that additional traffic that may occur, but it's completely up to you for when you guys want to reopen. There are, there are a variety of facilities that have already opened with the appointment-only restrictions in place. For moving through the phases, right now, we don't have an idea of when we're going to be at Phase Two or Phase Three. Some facilities may be in Phase One and Phase Two, to be honest with you, for the rest of the year, depending on what happens with the COVID activity. It's going to be something that we monitor on a weekly basis, to see if things are changing. As things reopen, there could be a chance for increased COVID activity because of additional travel, so we're planning on just taking it on a day-by-day basis. If an individual comes into the facility and has COVID, or starts to experience COVID-like symptoms, within our plan, we do also have a little piece that kind of details what to do in that type of situation, which our plan is to close off the city office that was visited by the ill person, and then open up the doors and windows in the impacted areas. After that, we would wait 24 hours, and then we would begin cleaning, kind of go from there. Those were guidelines taken from the CDC. For continuity of operations, one concern is, you know, if individuals do decide to come to the public facility and are sick and get staff sick, it could force a department to be shut down for an extended period of time while those staff members are recovering from the illness. So continuity of operations planning is important as well. I know there's several city offices just in Sheldon that, that's just a few individuals that operate in the office, so it's just, it's really important. If individuals are sick, to stay home and try to find a way to receive assistance over the phone or online. So I guess at this point in time, what additional questions do you guys have for me about reopening or the phased approach?
Jared, I've got a question in regards to mitigation strategies. Is, has testing, is playing any role on that? Are you hearing anything about testing? Whether it be infectious, you know, testing for infection or testing for antibody, either one?
I've heard a little bit about the testing. I know we do have a new Test Iowa site in Northwest Iowa, which opened up this past weekend in Storm Lake, which that is, that's another site that's available for individuals to go to if they're interested in trying to receive a test. They just need to go to the Test Iowa website to survey. Over the last week, they did make some changes to that survey for healthcare providers. Initially, healthcare providers may have received an notification that they did not qualify to go get testing. Additional guidance last week indicates that. If they complete the survey again now, it should indicate that they are able to go get testing, so that'd be your first responders, all your healthcare providers that are working at different healthcare facilities. As testing increases in the area, there could be a chance that we see additional cases arise, which is expected. I know that it looks like the state is, they're trying to get more testing available. There are still some limits to the local testing based on what is received from the state to the local hospitals, but I do believe their, those efforts are continuing to improve, and they're trying to get more testing out. There will be some additional Test Iowa updates coming out later this week, but I can't, I can't say them at this point in time. Thank you.
Jared, what are the current numbers in terms of, in O'Brien County, in terms of people that have been infected?
Right now, our total confirmed case count for COVID-19 patients is at 21. We've had an issue that has come up within the Iowa Disease Surveillance System, which has come up in other counties throughout the state. For O'Brien County Public Health, they've, they've had some individuals that show up in the, show up in O'Brien County count, but are actually located in a different county, and this issue has come up in other counties as well. The Iowa Department of Public Health has been notified of the issue within the Iowa Disease Surveillance System, and they're trying to, trying to work on that. So if individuals go to the coronavirus Iowa, that gov website, you can see a current case count, which the dashboard has changed over the past few days. They've also added pathology testing counts on there as well. And so, yeah, we were at 22 the other day, but then it dropped down to 21 due to address location error.
And any deaths?
No, no deaths at this time.
Yes, the question in my mind, hearing this plan, this phased plan, is, you know, in light of governments, or in cities and businesses reopening, is it just because the wheels of government turn so slow that it's that much lagging behind? Or just overly cautious, just taking the, you know, what, it just seems kind of slow to me?
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of agencies and other local governments were waiting to see the additional guidance that was going to be released by the state, which we've received some, and there were some new updates today in that new proclamation of disaster emergency. It sounds like the governor's going to be providing additional updates next week for kind of what's next after May 27. For, for the reopening, I think a lot of places are going to take it very cautiously initially, and kind of control the flow of individuals as they, as they come in. We are expecting a large number of individuals that need to go to the treasurer's office once we reopen, so the treasurer's office is working on a lot of, a lot of details over how they're going to assist with that flow for individuals that have had to wait while, while things have been closed. For the reopening, there's some places that may choose just to kind of reopen up completely and, and go from there. There are some that may go through a multi-step phase approach. Like the approach that we have is three phases. I've seen some other facilities use a, you know, five-step or greater approach. It kind of, it's just dependent on each, each agency to decide what will work best for them. Our goal is just to, we want to, we want to keep staff healthy so we can maintain operations of departments, and we're just going to, you know, kind of continue to try to provide support to departments that are going to receive a large influx of individuals as we open up. At the courthouse, we've actually, over the last few months, we've had a Dropbox located within the building in the entrance way that we can kind of isolate and keep close off to the rest of the building, but we are going to be placing a permanent Dropbox on the east side of the building, which will, which will help out for individuals that want to drop off stuff after hours, which I think the Sheldon outside Dropbox has worked out pretty well.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Jared at this time? Again, Jared, you've done a great job of keeping us informed. We thank you for your role. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to reports from our city staff. Sam, do you have anything you'd like to contribute at this time?
I do, Mayor. Very briefly, without getting into what we just discussed further in detail, simply say that Jared did a really nice job of providing a draft for us to consider. Not ready for today's meeting. I've, I've given it to all of you, and, but I have not... I've, I've given it to all of you and, but I have not linked it to some next agenda. Would not envision that this reopening plan would be something that is voted on in the sense of voting on it once and then being done with it. I would envision that it be on City Manager Council section each meeting for the next while, while we sort it out, because the, the guidance is continually changing from, from the state. That's all I have.
Scott Birch, anything you want to contribute from the PD?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right. Micah, do you have anything further you want to share?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Kurt, do you got anything else? And Angie, anything you want, okay?
I think Todd does.
Oh, Todd, yes. Forgot the best horse in the barn.
He's easy to forget about.
Todd, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a few things. I guess just a little project update. Crossroads North is finally making some progress and, and the Co-op building is also making some progress along with it. The two projects are working together fine and the delay in our project is, is not holding up the Co-op project at this time, so that's a good thing. I'm sure you've noticed, but Washington Avenue, we did close that down this week, Monday. Farmer's Market is working there as well as some of our staff on and off. They have done their first pour and are working towards that improvement. When that is done, that, that is going to be light years better than it's ever been in my time here in Sheldon, so I'm highly excited for that.
Todd, is that the Eighth Street? Is that at the Eighth Street intersection?
That, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So that project is underway. If you didn't notice on Western Avenue, we got that repaired done, and then shortly after that, the roof fell down on our old shed, the one that we have budgeted to replace in the next fiscal year. So that got flattened and hauled away this week. So we're just sticking stuff all over the place until we can start, start working on the new building here in the next few months. I did want to mention a couple of things about the governor's proclamation today. Some of you may have heard that, that swimming pools are open. Well, swimming pools can open on a very limited basis, and what I want to tell you for our pool, what, what Jake and I currently believe it means is that we're not, we can only open for lap swimming and, and for swimming lessons, assuming you can meet the social distancing guidelines in swimming lessons. Jake, Recreation Director Jake Kerr and some of his other WSI staff will be meeting and discussing what kind of lessons we think we could currently offer under, under those rules. I got to tell you, it's likely very, very limited. The pool is full as of yesterday. We are currently in the process of balancing chemicals. We will not turn the heater on yet, but we will have it ready to go in the instance we're able to open and operate in some manner. But under this current proclamation, it's, it's not reasonable. The other thing I thought that would be worthy of bringing up in this current proclamation is, is there's some excitement that, that baseball and softball are going to happen. I would like everybody to understand that it is practices only starting June 1, and they're hoping to start some sort of games at June 15, assuming conditions don't change. But I think the biggest kicker to that whole deal is that it is very specific in that it says school-sponsored activities can start under the guidelines put forth by the Iowa High School Athletic Association and the Iowa High School Girls Union. So what that means for summer rec is, in, in our reading of the proclamation, our summer recreation activities and our third through sixth grade softball, baseball programs that we put on are currently not allowed to happen. We have extended the deadline for all those activities until May 31. We're hoping there's some more guidance and, and things that come in the near future. If, if that happens, we're prepared to start those programs probably a couple of weeks later than what has been advertised. You know, as we move back our registration deadlines, we need to move back our start dates. We're prepared to give some sort of programming if we're allowed to, but as of now, those would not be allowed. So that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Todd, at this point, do we have lifeguards trained yet or not yet?
So Jake and his staff, his, his pool manager and assistant pool manager are going to start some online training, stuff that they can do via Zoom meetings or, or those type things. There is some training that does require actual, you know, saving, practicing of those type things that will require them to not social distance. So we're going to get done as much as we can of that and then, and, and try to be as ready as we can. We'll continue that other training at a later date if we have to. There, there are, just for your knowledge, there are some pools that have already decided they're not opening. Sioux Falls is not opening. City of Sergeant Bluff is not opening. City of Sioux City, I was told yesterday in a meeting, is, is probably not going to open some of their pools, and others will be only available for like the lap swim and those type things. Open swim, at least currently, is looking a little weak unless the governor changes what's going on. So not probably news you want to hear, but that's what we're dealing with. But I did want you to know, we are preparing as if we could open. If, if give us an opportunity to do some maintenance, it probably needed done anyway. At this point, if we were not able to open, we would be out, you know, a few chemicals and, and some water and maybe a little bit of staff time, but we thought the risk was worth the potential reward. I didn't want them to get the go to open the pool and then take three weeks to get it ready, especially with schools starting August 12. We're already looking at a limited season, which is why some of the other pools have decided to not open because they've decided that it's cost prohibitive.
Good information, Todd.
Yeah, we'll try to keep you in the loop as we move forward.
Okay, I took a call today from a father. He said his fifth grade son loves baseball, and he announced to the family the night at the supper table, "I just let you know," this is the fifth grader now speaking, "just letting you know, family, that if they don't have baseball summer rec this summer, I'd probably be crying for a while." So, and I'm sure that's, and he, and he was speaking on behalf of other parents as well. So I'm glad to hear that you are looking to make it happen if at all possible, and I, I think it's important for the kids of this community that if at all possible, we do make this happen. Without having school these last few months, their life has been in turmoil. We need, if possible, I know we have to be cautious, but we, I think we really need to make that happen if we can for them, so.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, one thing that we have discussed, and I'm not guaranteeing that any of this is happening, but one thing that we have discussed is that, let's say the governor's restrictions don't allow us to have summer rec early in the summer, or don't allow us to run our third through sixth grade baseball, softball programs, tennis, golf, you name it, I mean, the list goes on. What we might end up trying to do is run some short, one-day or two-day camps late in the year, or maybe later in the year, we can't have baseball, softball games, but maybe we could still organize some teams and hold some practices or, you know, skill improvement days or something. We'll look to do as much as we can, you know, with the rules and guidance that we're providing.
Good. Appreciate that. All right, council comments. I'm going to start with my online, Tom or Pete, anything you have that you want to share at this time?
Not today.
Okay, council on my left.
I just want to thank the ambulance members again, being EMS week, and then also believe last week was Police Officers Week or Police Department Week or something I've seen on social media, so we want to thank those officers of the PD and also their new cars look nice, so.
June 2 is primary day here in Iowa. For our area, the impact of who represents us at state and national level is up, so I think there's still time to get your absentee ballots in.
Today's the last day.
Is it? All right, well, the voting won't be at the pavilion, so get your vote in.
Say that while, because my wife hunted me down to get my signature this afternoon. Any other comments from you here, Wayne? All right, and I have none, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Of course. Roll call. No, yes.
Hi.
Hey, yours.
Hi.
Mr.?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Fairwin?
Hi.
You are adjourned.
Thanks, Chanel.
Oh, oh, oh.
Don't ever let him move that down.